Mambomawili, la kwanza mali myerela alisema tiba inaya mndinga na mpumbabu. Lapili, there was a time mainly young people... You can hear me? Young people, there was a time if you call yourself president in Kenya, you'll be detained without trial. So, next I'm going to call Ishaki Ibrahim Lithome here. He had given apologies. If he's not here, can I call Ibrahim Yongo? Ibrahim, are you here? Yes, Tafadali. Alaf baada yake atakuja Dr. Dave G Atella, KPM Du, Dr. Wesonga Uwassu, Buana Manyara, and then Dada Etoom Ruf Mumbi. So, as you come, brother, now let's get inside.
Ashukani. N'achikwa fursahii, kushkuru kilamwajawi twa mbawa mepika hapa, komajina naito Ibrahim Yongo, mimi kiongozi machinani, chiama wa muthindwa Welfare Association, ikwani simeya kufanya biashara kule ma kadara constituency. Young gurimachache, na ni observation nambayo nimekuani kifatilia, nikijaribu kuangalia jinsi tunafo ndelea na izi harakati zetu. Na tunafo mubizuri mamboli boenda mbaka palitume fika. Tuna fatuka way forward. Lakini katika iway forward pia tukiangalia kwa makini, sisi tunafigana tukidua target ni nini. Na tuna fatuka bino, imabino iko, natunadua vyongoziwetu wa nadua endgame ni nini. Kwevo wengene wetu vyongozi machinani. Tuna fatuka vyongoziwetu tukidua kwa mbawa, wanatuwelekeza katika mstari iliosawa. Lakini sisi machinani pia, tukiwa kule tunaangalia zila mbazo zanandeleya katika nyanja zaju, lazima tufanya observation na tuangalia, na tukosoye, pungufile, tukonayo, na tuzireke bishie. Sema mbao kuna upungufu na sisi tutowe maoni ni vipisi taimarishwa. La kwanza. Toka tumaliza uchaguzi, tunadua kote lipo tufanyo ubakaji, na tuka kubali. Lakini na fasti lipo peanoa kwa wale vyongozi ambao sasa wako mla kani kuende shachi, nibahiri kuwa kwa mbawa, hishuli hawakujanda abizuri, na mbaka leo kwa kweli ukiangalia mazungumzo vyongozi, inonye shakuwa kwa mbawa hawakujanda ama ujuzi, na bino ujandja kuende shakaifa hamna. Kwa hivi, na fasti ipo baro ya kureke bisha mambu. Lakini jee, sisi kama option, ambayo takoni fall back yemo na inchii. Wyongoziwetu ukidogo upungufi kwa wapi na ita rekabi shawadi pi. Mimi kwa mtazo mangu nikijaribu kuangalia jinsi tunafo figana vita kule hewani. Hapa na manisha kupiti vyongo via bari, magazine tini, redioni, na takoni televisioni. Kwa kweli kikosichetu ina upungufu ya wartu wa kurusha marasha rasha. Kwa mfanu, kwa kipindi chasukuli tatu makamuwa rais, amekua akitushambulia sana. Na nashambulaya vyongoziwetu wa ku, imbertika kiwangacha makamuwa rais ana uliza taifa. Amanaleza taifa. Yeye na zungumza kama makamuwa rais, ambaye lichaguliwa. Lakini hana mda ya kuzungumza na Raile Amolodinga, mbaka natuuliza. Raile Amolodinga ni nani? Yeye na zungumza kama nani? Tume fika hapo. Jee, ukijaribu kuangalia tajiriba. Ya makamuwa rais namushimura Raile Amolodinga His Excellency, hapo kuna compare zone kweli. Hakuna na fasti kama hiyo. Jee, kwa nini chukue kipindi cha wikimzima? Mushimura rais amekoso wa ishima hapo. Sisi wa narasha rasha wetu, nikisama marasha rasha wetu na manisha, futsodja swetu wa kumatika chagua, wako wapi. Vyongoziwetu wa kowapi wa kubishana na gachagua. Kwa sababu kiwangacha mabata karua namushimura Raile Amolodinga, sikuwa kwa chagua. Na wakati mzea tena koresponka gachagua ina manisha tumeshi cha havya mze. So tunauliza, tunauliza. Na mimi siko hapa kukose watu ishima isipokuwa. Kwa observation, young gurikuwa, awa communication sector ama communication system iko na upungufu. Na natakiwa, ikiwale gachagua ama ichunga tasmama aonge, na aonge ujinda na opuzeli boongea. Juwalisi tuwe kabia tujapata mtuwa kumjibu moja kwa moja. Ine observation ya kwanza. Kwevo nikibalizia nokta hilo, nikitaka kuomba communication team ya azimio. Tafadali ni, mari sheni kikosichenu. Na mimi n'achikwa fursahii mama na kuliza moja kwa moja. Ningoma na fasti katika iyo sector. Mimi ni wepo matches tukona the best team lakini there's only a chance for improvement. Na tuzidera uliana ya bazwa siena kama mekoso wa ishima isipokuwa, kunana fasti na kuna haja ya kuimarisha ito kikosi diokusudi, tukirishiwa kumbora nisitwa roja kumbora. Tusi rishiwa kumbora ina fika wikimzima kama hiyo agenda bota lirushiwa, na ni wongomtufu sisa tujare respond ina kwa ni kweli. Na sisa tujadua abizuri. Tunadua abizuri wale ma, wale ma bwana ni wazuri sana kwa kweka propaganda. Lamusho, ilisama n'achikwa kusema. Tafadali. Tunadua abizuri, vugu vuka mbayo nandelea kwa saizi, ama harakati mbayo nandelea kwa saizi. Tunadua inezafika kiwangala ya kwa kwa mbawa, utarudi uchaguzi ama sisi tupewe serikali. Lakini n'utufiki hapo, n'utufiki hapo. Jee, tutakotu mwa nda mwa na inchii kwa jia dani. Mwa na inchii atandaliwa kwa jia dani kwa sababu kumbuka wenyewe tuna pinza na nao, ni watu wajandja sana, na ni wakona sana kwa propaganda na mandaliza machinani tunafo zungumza saizi. tunafo zungumza saizi. Chiama cha Kenya quisha. Tayari wako na mikakati kupitia hii kofazawa wana bawa na ita ni hustler fans. Ni mbo kwa mbabe ni kiongozi machinani ya kwenye sivu mina ngozaleo, kunawatuwa ma idenzwa wa wankuja kwa taka sivu yangu ya soko. Na wanakuja na agenda moja. Kunayo mbino ambayo yeme shazi nduliwa upia, ambayo inakuja kuama sisha watu machinani. Kwa kwa kuna further katika iyo kofazia hustler fans. Lakini sasa ina target, ina target vi kundi. Ambazo zikotari zikor registered. Na tunadua abizuri bile vi kundi zikor registered machinani ama ama mtaani ziko kwa wingi sana. Sasa lengolaao ni kwenda kumarisha zila vi kundi zinapewa na fasti nazinelezewa. Kila kikundi ifanyi recruitment ya wartu ya apo amsinu. Kisha kunama peni ambayo watapewa moja kwa moja wanafumka masako hivi. Kisha wanapewa pesa pale ya wako kope shana wako kwa wao. Tayari hii ni minuja ya kuindiya na kukita machinani, ambapo sazi lifi lifi kitapuliza tui kwa mbawa lapda kuna uchaguzi na kuja. Tayari wao watakuwa kuna ma idenzwa wa ambao ukidogo ama kwa jia moja. Nyigine wa meimarisho kikami. Ma cheche.
Asante sana Ibrahim. Lakini na womba mtuwa kipera fursa itumie abizuri na posupi lakini asante sana bubibrahim koma ozea. Dr. Atella? Dr. Atella? Dr. Wesonga? As, as, as Dr. Wesonga is coming ndugu manyara awe tayari au majakos, majakos, Makadios. Alaf fursa mumbi.
Thank you very much. His Excellency Raile Amolodinga. His Excellency present. My name is Konstantin Wasonga. I'm the Secretary General of University Academic Staff Union. From the academy, we are supporting social justice. And we have one motto, that education liberates. We don't support injustice. So whenever you find a movement that fight for social justice, know that Wasonga is there. We have been given the data here. I don't want to agree with the data. I don't want to dispute the data. Because you know, I represent all the landed people here. Analysis of data falls under the domain of my members. I'm going to subject this data, interrogate it, then we'll give our position. So that I give a position from an informed position. And you know, once we get that this thing is right, we give our position whether you like it or not. Since independence, it is the first time that the government cannot pay his workers. And people think that it is a normal exercise. We have been told to tighten our belts. I want to say that as University Academic Staff Union, we shall not tighten our belts. Because we pay taxes and we are not going to beg to be paid. We are going to demand to be paid. So whoever is thinking that they can tell academic staffs to tighten their belts, we are not there. Today is 13th. Our members worked and we don't know whether we are going to be paid or not. You know initially, the middle class thought that the cost of living was just high for the poor. Now they have gone to the middle class. So it is upon the middle class to stand up and speak because we are heading in the wrong direction. Whoever imagined that a government can say that they cannot pay their workers, a government is sending workers to tighten their belts, and unionists are not talking? Don't count me there, I'm not there. I am with the people. And once we will stand with the people and we will not tighten our belts, a government that cannot pay our workers has no business being on the throne. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. He was speaking on behalf of all the academics and those who profess at the university. I would like to call now either Manyara or Makadios. And then Ruf Mumbi, either Kanunkaranja or his representative Suba Churchill, and we finish with Kenneth Ossido.
Combris power! Combris power! Combris power! Combris ria! Combris ria! Your Excellency Raile Amolodinga, Madha Karua Kalozomusiyoka, vyongoziwote wa azimio. Mimi naito Anthony Manyara, the President Kenya University Students Organization, also doubling as the President of East African Students Union. Mimi nimekuja paleo kuakilisha wana funzuwote wa all the universities in this country. Now, before I even make a few comments, let me recognize the student leaders with us here today. Starting with my able deputy Rachel Tabida, where are you? You just wave from wherever you are. If you're an elected student leader, Tafadali, just wave from wherever you are. As you can see, Buana, as you can see, your Excellency tukona vyongoziwote wa combris hapa. Minta wongea mabomachache sana. First of all, let me begin by saying that if this government is blamed for very many problems that students are facing today. Jambo la kwanza ukiangalia mamboya help. Last week, last week but one, we had Kabyanga University demonstrating. We had very many universities that have demonstrated sababu ya mamboya help. Mimi Baba nataka kukuomba sahi, ututengeyata kama ni Friday twe dele na madama no etu as university students. Mpaka tuka kikisha ya kwa mbawa hiyo pesa imiatiliwa. We are not begging for our salaries. We are not begging for help. Help is a right for every student. I would like to summarize this by saying that you cannot pick pockets a naked man. This is why we are saying this is because wana fuze pale ucho kiku, wanakaanga panya, wanawindan dega. These are students who are sleeping angry. The government doesn't understand that wana fuze wana inama. This, we are, we are coming to, we are coming to a situation whereby students are killing themselves, students are committing suicide sababu hakuna chakula pale shule. Number two, I'd like to tell this government that you have come with very many unsustainable policies. One of them is CMC. CMC is completely unsustainable. Why come up with a program that cannot be able, you cannot be able to sustain it? Number three, Baba, we have the movement for the defense of democracy. One of students have been in opposition since 1963. Sa hi, tunaaka kuomba, iyo bypassi partisan talks ambayo inafanika, let youth leaders be part and parcel. Ata Tafadali subcommittee itengenezo kido wa potini. So that young people can feel part and parcel of that process. Nikimalizia Baba nataka kuseme ya kwa mbawa movement for the defense of democracy. Kuna wale watu alikomeanza kutentijina. Wakisema tiawa watu, siju omeva beret, siju omeva jesi. Awa ni vijana ambayo akwa the forefront of fighting for the rights of many Kenyans who are the oppressed, who are the hoipolo, who are the people down there. Awo diu real uslas. Awa watu ambayo wanapiganiwa na ovi jana, they are the real uslas. Na mimi nikitaka kusema Baba, we thank you so much because you're the only person who has been withstanding. We have been withstanding in justice for a very long time. Ukihona university students are on your side. It is because we are fighting for the right thing. Sisi tunaataka kusimama kwa haki na ukweli. Mimi mwenyeewe nikiuwa Manyara, nilisema ya kwa mbawa hakuna wakati intapelekwa wana fuze wa vyoviku kwa jia ambayo hi fi. Sisi tumeka ndamizo for a very long time. Since history, since time immemorial, this is the very first time, very first time that the government is neglecting university students. Wana fuze hapashule, they cannot survive, they cannot survive. Jana ni wongea na CEO wa help, naito ringera. Ananiambiya Tafadali wongea na treasury, wongea na CS treasury. Nikijaribu kuongea na eya shikissimo. Kuatilia pesa 5.7 billion pekeake, is it a problem really to the government? Is it a problem? Ukiangalia the expenditure which is being used by the State House. They using billions on very extravagant issues. Wanayenda wananumuwa magari kubokuboa. Iyo pesa inafa kuatiliwa, yen de ipeao wana fuze oweze kwen delea na masomoya. Finally, wata nimalizia nikisema ya kwa mbawa, this government does not understand dialogue. This government does not understand dialogue Baba. Sisi tunaataka kuomba tuto rundisho palea kwa street tena. Tafadali declare Baba, declare. Kama wenyewe my brother kwa ucho wamesema hapo, we are very ready. Mimi amobilize my troops, kwa ucho mobilize bunge lake, watu wengi yapa tukona tawa wandai yapa mobilize pale wa bunge. Sisi wote tupa tane police moja, we do a real match to State House. Ama namnagani? Nikimalizia. Nikimalizia Baba wata nikushkuru sana sababu umesimama na wana fuze for a very long time. We are very loyal. Tumesema ya kwa mbawa jia tukona weewe. Mpaka misho. Kama ni dialogue, iyo say, iyo say nyigine etu ya dialogue, sisi tuzimama na weewe. Tumeyarialize ya kwa mbawa wa bunge wao wanasema, wamepeana people look like jokers kwa iyo pati yao ya bipartisan. We are telling Dr. Ruto, Tafadali review your team, review your team. Let us serious faces. Ata kusema tiwa tuende tukoongea na kemaniki chungo, who is kemaniki chungo? Who is kemaniki chungo? We are supposed to reject those bipartisan talks until they bring serious faces on that team. Thank you so much.
Asante sana brother. Na, 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 namshkuru sana kiongozi wetu wa wana fuze wa vyoviku. Wale wana kuja kuzungu sasa n'utulamalizia n'utuje kwenye plenary. Just hold on. Mimi, I learned, I learned a great lesson when I went to Karachuonyo. Kule unasema mogik alaf unandelea. Alaf unasema mogik kabisa, alaf unandelea. Alaf unasema mogik kabisa kabisa. Sasa ukija hapa mogik moja tu. Only one mogik. Dada etu Ruf. Dada Ruf Mumbi, Human Rights Defenders Network.
Viva na Kenya, viva na Kenya. Viva na Kenya, viva na Kenya. Oh, viva, viva, viva na Kenya. Viva na Baba. Viva na Baba, viva na Baba. Oh, viva, viva, viva na Baba. Komajina meskia mini Ruth Mombi wana harakati mtu tezi wa haki za kibinadam. Na mimi hapa leo niko na jambo tumbili na kusema. N'ilekwa katika harakati ya kupigania na kutake na ku make sure ya kwa mbawa katiba ambayo sisi we Kenya tulidipatia, tu imepigia kura na tumepetisha. N'ile coordinate wa Remboni yes. And I'm glad that Mama, Madha Karua is here today because we went round kwaambia wana wake na washtana ya kwa mbawa hikatiba ni etu na lazima tujipatie. So so mi hapa nata kuongea kuhusu Article 1 of the Constitution. Ni kumbusha the current regime ya kwa mbawa, hisi privilege wa natupatia and right to protest can never be a privilege of the states. Ni haki etu kulingana na katiba etu ya Kenya, Article 1 of the Constitution. Ambayo inasema, we can exercise our power as people either directly or indirectly. And we are here today as the Kenyan people to exercise that power directly. Na hatuka wamba ruhusa, na tuambi ruhusa, na hiken, na hiserikali. Hiserikali ambayo inajiita siju serikali ya hustler. Anilifkiriya wale wagiongea ambale angwa especially the religious leader inmesi dinaenda kwenu. Katika bibilia inatukumbusha ya kwa mbawa, wana Israeli walizunguka the walls of Jericho siku saba. Muliona tiagas. Hawakupigwa na tiagas. Na kama nini munajidaya kwa mbawa nini serikali che ule na moyozi mungu, bonamunatuchapa na tiagas. So sisi kama wa Kristo, wa Kenya, wanaduni, we are going to protest, we are going to exercise our power and it is not a privilege that you people and especially Ali Iba Bin Kura hatu wambi weewe ruhusa. Tume ona vile muliba kura. Baba likuita zakayo. Lakini mimi leona kuita Ali Iba Bin Ushuru. Ushuru hatulipi sababu ya nini? Kama tuna lipa Ushuru, namnandelea kuchukuwa yao Ushuru etu kujinundulia magari mkiwa na omo ma'u bonoko. Sisi kama mauma'u. The real hustler, the mother of the nation. We are going to take back that power na tuseme ya kwa mbawa enough is enough. So Baba, we are here with you as the grassroots, as the women. Now dialogues napo ndelea nationally, we as the grassroots women, we as activists, we as young women of Kenya, tuta kuwa tukizi endeleza kule machinani. Mukiyongea hapa ju na sisi tunaongea hapa chini. N'achukuwa sauti etu, n'asema wana inchii wa Kenya wanesema hivi. So because if we don't reclaim back this country, it's going to the dogs. And it's unfortunate. It's really unfortunate what ambayo hawa believe in the rule of law tidi wana tuongoza. Baba tuna ku, tuna kuliza. Tafadali, tupatia list ya friends wetu wale international na ma adui zetu. Kwa sababu katika kazia nguya wana harakati, tumesimama sana na Venezuela. We have shared solidarity with the Venezuelan people. But wakati karmago alitu ibia ushindi wetu, it's really unfortunate that even the Venezuelan government haijaa yongea jambo. So sisi tutakotu naofa solidarity kwa ale wana tu patia solidarity. So kohayo machache na mengi n'asema ni asanti na lazima tushikane, mukono, na tupatia ne nguvu ya kur reclaim na ku expand the shrinking space ambayo inandelea kushrink katika hii inchii etu ya Kenya. Anikirudia hapo kwa nini kua right to protest. Ni ayibu kubwa sana wakati ya maandamano. Tuliona kibera mtoto aliwawa na polisi na tiagas. Tuka wana kisumu kijana students masena university alipigwa risasi. Juzy kumekuwa na maandamano darakanidi. The illegitimate government imeona nimuhimo kutoa statement kuhusu darakanidi. But I'm here to remind them, every life matters. And you're not going to tell us when to protest, how to protest, and where to protest. It's enshrined in our constitution and we will exercise that to the fullest. Viva Kenya, viva!
Asante sana Dada Mumbi. We had confirmation from NCCK that they'll send a representative. Is there any representative NCCK here? If you, if you are here, please come, come forward. But let me call brother Suba Churchill to come and share some thoughts. And then Kevin Ossido and we'll close that and we'll come to to the floor very briefly. Baba, thank you so much and the leadership for keenly listening and taking notes. Just a little while longer and then we'll, we'll finish this session.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm Suba Churchill. I'm an activist and I've been an activist for the last 28 years and still counting. And if there is anyone who others would wish to retire, maybe in the sector is Suba Churchill, but I refuse to retire. The Right Honourable Raile Amolodinga, your Excellencies present and former governors present and other dignitaries. It is my pleasure to speak on behalf of a sector that I've served for a number of years and to show solidarity with some of the sentiments that have been expressed here. I've had the privilege to be part of the team that worked on the constitution of Kenya sitting as delegate number 463 at the Bomars Constitutional Conference in 2003 and 2004. And not only sat as a delegate but co-chaired the Technical Committee on Citizenship and the Bill of Rights. And so my submissions here today are going to be based on the provisions of the constitution. One of the provisions of our constitution under Article 38.2 is that every citizen has a right to free, fair, and regular elections based on universal suffrage. And that is provided under the Bill of Rights. Article 35 of the same constitution tells us that every person has a right to access information held by the state and more so when that information is required to protect a right or fundamental freedom. What am I trying to say? That those who have made it look as if asking for the opening of the server is like extracting somebody's tooth without the benefit of an aesthetics should know that accessing information held by the server is a fundamental right protected under Article 35 of the constitution. And so irrespective of how the Supreme Court rules, Article 35 of the constitution remains operational and any Kenyan at any point in time has a right to demand access to information held by the state of its agencies including the IBC to certify themselves that indeed their right to free and fair elections as provided for under Article 38 was protected and that the results that the IBC announced were as they ought to be. I know there are friends who have told us that the 2022 elections were the free I know there are friends who have told us that the 2022 elections were the freest, the fairest. But as one who has observed elections for the African Union in 28 African countries so far, I will tell you that there cannot be free and fair elections if the vote before it is cast is different from the vote after it is cast. The figures that we have been treated to here indicate that the votes before they were cast multiplied for some candidates after they were cast. And therefore, the results as announced by the IBC on the presidential vote do not meet the requirements of Article 86 of the constitution that requires that no matter what method is used in conducting the vote, they must be verifiable, they must be accurate and all this seems to be missing in this process. Every time this discussion crops up with my colleagues in the sector, I ask them one simple question. Kwamba juicy tuliwana watu wa kienda kwa shamba lamungine wakaiba kondo. Ikwa uyomutu ambayo alibiwa kondo. Anashuku watu fulani naseme juicy nimepotesa kondo kada mamia ya kondo. Nanashuku kwamba kunamoya ikwa kwa i nyumba. The solution is simple. Open the door, let the owners of the kondo certify themselves that indeed you are not holding any of the lost. That is the stand of the civil society. That there can be no reconciliation without justice and there can be no justice without truth. That truth can only be asserted not by my friend Wasonga going to subject this data but by the holders of the information making that information available because we'll end up confusing the masses. Because your lecturers will come up with their own figures, other people will also come with their own. Let those who are holding the information make it available pursuant to Article 35 of the constitution. That is the stand of the civil society. We have been told in Article 88 of the constitution that the IBC is one of the constitutional commissions. As one who participated in writing this constitution, I've looked at the provisions relating to the functions of the IBC. And I think, and I want to suggest, that the Independent Electoral and Boundaries Commission is too important a commission to be established just like all the other constitutional commissions. As an election observer, I know for a fact that there are three types of commissions. Ours falls under the constitutional commissions. Then there is the mixed model and the government model. It is my submission that what is in contention in this matter is not the panel. It is the formula being used to establish the commission. And I want to urge us to admit that our country and our state of democratic development is still too backward to let the president and incumbent president run the show by presiding over the appointment of everybody else who contributes people into the panel that set up the commission. I want to remind us that in 2002, the only reason we had free and fair and credible elections that met the frameworks as set out in Article 86 is when we had different actors, critical stakeholders, saying this will be a representative in the commission. So what we are calling for as a civil society is a review of the method of setting up the IBC. And we are saying that whatever is in this constitution is not cast on stone. That it is not about the panel, it is about relooking at Article 88 of the constitution and saying this formula is wrong. And Dr. Wasonga will agree with me that as our mathematics teachers used to say, when you get the formula wrong, the answer can never be right. We will never get it right until we get the formula of establishing, not reconstituting, establishing the commission. Because the commission is the one that registers citizens as voters. Is the one that delimits boundaries of constituencies and wards. Is the one that updates the voter's role. Is the one that oversees the resolution of disputes of nominations. Is the same one that presides over referenda and elections. We are saying this commission must be treated differently. And we have examples in that same constitution. The manner in which, for example, the Revenue Allocation Commission is established, where there is consultation, where people stakeholders have representatives is perhaps some of the formula we need to borrow and bring into the establishment of the IBC. Lastly, as a representative of the sector, I would be failing in my responsibility if I don't raise this. Way back in 2013, a new law was passed, the Public Benefit Organizations Act, that was supposed to repeal the NGO Coordination Act and establish an enabling environment for the civil society to thrive and make their contribution in our socio-economic development. That law that was passed by parliament in 2012, assented to by former president Mweki Baki on 13th February 2013 is yet to become operational because successive regimes have refused to operationalize it. We are seeing on the other side people who called us names said we are evil society. I'm not surprised that day in, day out, they celebrate the contributions made by Kenyans in the diaspora but never mention the significant contribution that this sector makes to the economy, creating jobs and ensuring that those who are under privilege, those who are underserved, get some of the services that government cannot provide. Lastly, I agree with those who are saying that ata kama kunamajadiliano inandelea kwa kikafulani. Motopia lasima iwe inawaka inje. It, it, that's how it works. That's how it works without pressure. And some of the things they don't admit, you know, when people are complaining about salary, what they are not admitting is that two weeks of mass action, they cost them the money they would have used to pay. They, they'll not tell you that, but these are the realities. We need to cost them another two weeks so that those civil servants can join us in the demonstrations. This is how revolutions happen. Revolutions don't happen when everybody's paid on time. We like it, we like it. Some of us in the activist side of the world like it when everybody is not comfortable. So Baba, another two rounds of mandamano. And all civil servants who are not yet paid will join you in the struggle for change. One thing people are close to you may not tell you and which people say outside is that you don't seem to have the ruthlessness that is required in this struggle. That, you know, my grandfather was a well-known partaker of traditional brew, busa. But you would not entertain a fly around this calabash. You are still entertaining people who have defected. People have crossed over, people have betrayed the struggle. By now, there should have been a by-election ongoing in Kisumu for the senate. By now, we should be having a by-election in Langata. People are saying you don't have the ruthlessness. This struggle requires some level of ruthlessness. And it is not that there is no shortage of people who can lead in those constituencies. Bondo constituencies ashua beds. What are we waiting with that? Baba, you need some level of ruthlessness in this struggle. Because if people are aiming to kill you, why not kill them first? That is what the struggle is about. I'm glad to see my colleagues, Kenya University Students Organization. I want to tell you I'm the founder, chairman of the Kenya University Students Organization. And when we were founding it in 1995, some of us were expelled. Then we became clever. We say if you are thrown out through the door, find a way of coming back through the window. So when we went to the register of societies, they say you, in particular, we know you are notorious. You have been expelled, you are not a student. We went and registered in a driving school and came back and say now you see, we are students eh? In a driving school. Those are some of the creativity that we need. Asante sana.
Sisi niwa Baba eh? I, I hope my brother Suba will not mind me sharing the following. I, I want to share with Baba two things about Suba as he greets him. So Brother Suba introduced himself as, as an activist. But at the end, he also indicated that he was a founder, student leader of the university. But even more importantly, he is now the national coordinator of Civil Society Reference Group. He was out of town when he heard this session was on. By his own pressure and the pressure of those he represents, he, he traveled overnight to be here today. So Kevin, please, you're, you're, you're the second last person, so let's make it precise. And I have reserved the last chance in this session, the last chance, to those men and women who are in the front line represented by MDD.
Kwanzaa kabisa. Kwanzaa kabisa ningependa kutambua. Kuali vyongozi. Wareni lazimio ambao wako hapa. Vyongozi wetu ambao pia ni vyongozi wa viama vyakisiasa. Inaona hapa wameja, wamefureka furifuri. Vyongozi wetu ambao wamechaguliwa kutoka katika bunge zetu za ju. Napia zagatuzi na muonaspika wetu wa Nairobi wanangondi pia kohapa. Vyongozi wa seka ambalimbali. Wa Kenya wenzangu mabibi na mabuana hamujombo. Wanayasu Kristo asifiwe. Salaam aleikum. So I want to begin by really appreciating the organizers of this session who considered it wise and very thoughtful to have conversations from Kenyans around the ongoings in their country. When we received this phone call that came to us yesterday evening, we were very glad because this really is an exercise of Article One, one of the constitution of Kenya that gives sovereign people to the people, sovereign power to the people. In addition to that, we have very many legislative proposals that support public participation. So we have come here in very big and huge numbers to participate. And if a similar call comes from Kenya Kwanzaa, we will as well attend and make our voice to count. I am speaking on behalf of an organization called County Governance Watch whose sole purpose is to watch over devolved governments of Kenya really by presenting proposals and recommendations that strengthen and enhance devolution in the counties. In addition to this, we engage a lot in issues around leadership and governance. And so elections, peace and security really form the core of the work that we do. And so in the Middle East, we have organizations that are from, let me say across the country because beyond County Governance Watch, we engage with a network called the Peace Actors Forum that is represented by Madame Leia Kimathi, I think she is seated somewhere there. And also stakeholders from Madare, Kibra and other informal settlements that we engage with. They have sent me here with a four-page document that I am not going to read, but I want to summarize it in brief. The first issue is of course taking note of the fact that our elections are necessarily standing as a trigger for violence, crisis and dilemma. And this is happening because as a country, we have failed to really look at the far greater challenges that the country is facing. And so if you look at very many platforms that have been presented to us, very many conversations that have taken place in this country, there are lots of unfinished business. And that is why even as we stand in this very non-partisan platform, we want to appreciate Baba. Because I keep telling people that if Baba told us that kulikuwa namamluki pahali, na kunawatu wa likata. Nakasama nimeonawame ngia namlango hu, namusipoazuiya na kuaziba watatoka namlango hii ngine. After a few weeks, what happened? The faces of the mamlukis wali, tuliwa nyeshwa, wali angazwa. If Baba says that there is an issue with this server. If Baba says that there is an issue with this server. Si basi tutaweka server pia wawe mamluki. Nabadaye kutakuwa nasehemu napahali ambapo ukweli wa uo server utajuli kana. And so we take note of processes such as the Kenya National Dialogue and Reconciliation Processes of 2008 that raised issues for among those issues constitutional legal institutional reforms, land reforms, tackling poverty and inequality, tackling unemployment especially among young people and of course cross-cutting issues such as consolidating national cohesion and unity while addressing transparency, accountability and impunity. As an, as a network and an agency, we are convinced that the political process that we currently have especially bordering on largely the reasons why we are here focus on humiliating competitors, critics and those who do not agree with the views rather than building consensus and strategies for solving our country's issues. So we take note of progressive processes that have been, that have taken place to try and deal with some of those concerns. But we are also convinced that the people, the economy, eradication of suffering and promoting dignity are not a preserve of politics and therefore of governments. Progressive voices has to be given, voices have to be given their place at those particular tables. And that is why beyond the four, the agenda four issues, the three concerns that I've raised are concerns that are bedeviling Kenyans today. Consequently, and despite being detailed in past review processes including the Kenya and Nepad APRM process, process reports, the Justice Waki and Prigla Commissions, the National Cohesion and Integration Commission reports, the Truth, Justice and Reconciliation Commission TGRC report that of course led to the 2007, 2008 Kenya National Dialogue and Reconciliation process, the Vision 2030 document itself and much more closely, we take note of progress and regress that have been made, that were made in the 2017 Joint Parliamentary Select Committee. And one agenda that not so many of us have talked about here today is the Building Bridges to Unity process that was watched by our courts. These ladies and gentle, ladies and gentlemen are opportunities that give us the privilege therefore to make progressive steps that give us platforms to be able to exercise progressive, um, progressive, um, progressive aspects that therefore address the conflicts and the challenges that Kenyans are facing. The second broad conceptual challenge that we submit to Azimio today is the increasing feeling of hopelessness among the citizenry due to being disempowered and indeed the lack of organizing, lack of an objective and consistent voices among the citizen groups. Must it be the right Honorable Raile Amolodinga who will stand between the injustices that Kenyans are facing and the progressive steps that Kenyans require from their governments? The answer is no. And therefore, we are hoping that in all these additional processes that are being undertaken, including the latest, which is the bipartisan process, that this degree of helplessness that Kenyans are facing is going to be addressed. And that it is neither the right Honorable Raile Amolodinga and his fellow leaders and the government, but that Kenyans will begin to have the conscious thinking and understanding that we have a responsibility that has been given to us by our constitution to exercise certain sovereignty. Therefore, in finishing, what are our six proposals to Azimio and to the bipartisan committee? Number one, we are proposing that we need to restructure the executive to dignify and institutionalize the opposition to perform its oversight role effectively within a presidential system. Now, this memorandum explains the pros and cons of a presidential system, the benefits that Kenya has been able to accrue between the presidential and even the parliamentary system that we enjoyed its stint a few years ago. The Constitution of Kenya therefore provides that elections, as Suba Churchill rightfully said, will be held every five years. But it also establishes an electoral management body, otherwise called the I E B C, Independent Electoral and Boundaries Commission. The mandate and the functions of that commission is to conduct free, fair, transparent and accountable elections for Kenyans. In exercise of that mandate, Kenyans vote for six positions that of course, um, interest different contestants. Going but, going by past electoral experiences, we have been told that winning the presidency means getting everything and losing everything if you lose and fail to become the president. This is happening both at the national level, regional levels, county levels, but even at an individual level. When you run for president, like the four candidates who ran for office and did not lose it, where do we take you to? What does that mean for us as a people? And therefore, we are proposing that we need to begin to have a conversation as candid as is possible to review this structure that therefore will be able to open up certain spaces for us to be able to look at how we can be able to strengthen accountability, transparency and indeed integrity of various agencies. The second issue that we are raising, devolution. So strengthening devolution, institutional performance and governance. We have seen, and as an, as a network, we have undertaken an analysis of the promises that were made by both Azimio Laomojia and also Kenya Kwanzaa on devolution and the benefits that would be, um, that would accrue to Kenyans with this. We are sorry to say that Kenya Kwanzaa government has failed to live by the, uh, dreams of Kenyans and the prospects that have been given to us through the constitution of Kenya insofar as devolution is concerned. And therefore, we are proposing that one, funds that have been contained by the national government that are supposed to go to county governments be released and that the bipartisan process that has been proposed begins to have a candid conversation around how we can be able to forestall the challenges that come with the division of revenue allocation. This goes beyond just parliament, but also looking at the various constitutional commissions and also the functions as are detailed in Schedule Four function of, uh, Schedule Four of our constitution of Kenya that basically narrates the functions of both national and county governments. Why are we saying this? We say this because we have also noted a trend at which the national government, particularly the Kenya Kwanzaa government, is stifling devolution, not just because of judiciary mechanisms and concerns, but indeed even regaining and reclaiming functions that are supposed to be done by county governments and they are currently being both financed and executed and implemented by national government. If we fail to do this, ladies and gentlemen, therefore what will happen? For the first time, as my, one of my former speakers has said, we are noticing a trend where public servants have not been paid. County governments, various service delivery sectors have actually threatened to go on strike. Are we saying that it is the demonstrations that are going to get us back to the drawing and talking table? The answer is both yes and no. Why? Because we have to exert pressure. So the people will exert that pressure. And we also have to have conversations that are progressive and transformational. As I head towards finishing, the third issue is bringing a closure to the 2017 and 2022 general elections and making elections credible, accountable and acceptable. We are here because we have been given data. What does this data mean to you? And I want to echo the words of Suba Churchill because they are also indicated in this memorandum. Article thirty-five of the constitution gives any citizen of the Republic of Kenya the right of access to information held by the state. If we fail to exercise that right and not waiting for Baba Moshimio, her right Honorable Raile Amolodinga, we want to see as many petitions to institutions of government pushing for opening up of the servers. It doesn't have to be Raile Amolodinga. As an individual, you can do a petition. As a network of family members, you can do a petition. And so beyond this meeting, I am requesting us to go out there and sit for petitions, letters and questions that will ensure that if the server has the answer to what ails Kenya today, let the servers be opened. We have been told that there is no mechanism, there is a mechanism in Article thirty-five. But if we fail to exercise that right, what will we be doing? Let's go back to the voter turnout of 2022 elections. More than ten million plus people did not vote. Young people particularly, eight point four million, didn't turn up to vote. If we fail to strengthen reasons as why Kenyans go to an election, twenty twenty-seven might not even attract a thirty-four percent voter turnout. Why? Because Kenyans will ask the question, what does my vote mean? And so we are also asking that question. What, what does waking up early in the morning mean to us? What does it mean to our government in office? Let us exercise our sovereign power, ladies and gentlemen, to push for implementation of Article thirty-five and Article thirty-eight of the constitution that gives power to people for universal suffrage, suffrage on elections. Because failure to exercise that power, the young people of the generation that, uh, that are following up to Moshi Raile Amolodinga will not wake up to go and vote. That means that there may be no elections in twenty twenty-seven. Lastly, cost of living. How many of us have a hundred shillings in our pockets? Kenyans are trying, we want food and it is the responsibility of any government that calls itself a caring government to provide mechanisms, stable environments and opportunities for people of all Kada, whether elders, young people, persons with disability, the youth, women, children, to find food to eat. Children want to go to school. We are asking the government to exercise its power to make cost of living affordable, achievable for the majority of Kenyans. I thank you so much for listening to me on behalf of the people who sent me here. God bless you, God bless Kenya and God bless Azimio. Santin.
Um, thank, thank you very much, Kevin. I, I was not rushing him, but because Kevin has a written memorandum, I'm sure we'll be happy to receive the memorandum and process it, but continue to engage with you and your national network. Now, we have come to the end. Is there a representative of MDD here? Oh, he's here, we were waiting. We said we are going to give you the last loud intervention at this stage because you are on the frontline of Bambam.
Freedom, our people, freedom! Freedom, our people, freedom! You know, my name's Eliud Opang. And Malcolm X says, "By every means necessary." I operated closely with MDD, but I'm the chairman of the Ordinary People's Movement. And we had to, I had to take this chance and for sure you cannot now stop me. During the French Revolution, one jean said, "When the poor will be left with nothing more to eat, they will come for the rich." As the ordinary, we've come this close, I can assure you. And I want to tell you with Baba being our general, as the ordinary citizens, this is what the ordinary people are saying. We took notes when you were told negotiations were commencing. Baba, that very week, Dr. Ruto called you my brother. The second week, his deputy, without chills, called you ordinary. Baba, if you're not going to let us go to the streets as you continue with negotiations, what will they do the third week? I can tell you Baba, the ordinary people want to be in the streets because that is the only platform. We have a chance to enjoy our rights. And I want to remind everybody, and this is biblical, in Galatian six nine, for those of us who are in struggle and at times get weary, Galatian six nine reminds you, don't be wary of doing good for in the right time and in due time. If you don't give up, you will assuredly get the reward. God bless you very much and may God take care of you and part of you as we go through our struggle. Thank you.
Santesana. Sasa, to finish that, we need to appreciate them with that manu new manu new kidogo eh? So quickly, manu new, manu new, manu new, manu new. Moshi, moshi. Moshi, manu new mekuwa mvua. Mvuwa yo, inaongezeka. Nyangi. Nyangi sana. Ravi! Asanteni sana. Now, with your kind permission, we are going to request His Excellency Kalonzo, Stephen Kalonzo Musioka to make a few comments and a few observations because he is going to represent the leadership in a commitment that one of them has to go and attend to. So Your Excellency.
Uh, this is not an occasion today for the Buffalo Soldier. We came to listen to our brothers and sisters from the civil society. Civil society, hoiye! Azimio, hoiye! Asanteni. I do not have to make any apology because it doesn't matter at what stage one may speak. But I know that the keynote reflections will be made by our brother Raile Odinga. And I know our sister mother may want to actually farm it on on Article provisions of Article thirty-five of our constitution, the right to information. And I know that, uh, as Kenyans, we are concerned about the state, not only of the economy, but the state of the nation of Kenya today. I made a remark over the weekend to which Dr. Ruto replied quickly. And I said, I've been in government for quite a time. I've never, can't remember when, anytime. Cannot remember at any given time when the Kenya government was unable to pay its workers. And government is the largest employer. At the time when we had the grand coalition government, and Dugurai La will remember, and mother, we, as an economy, would raise ninety, ninety-seven percent of our budget. In fact, this is one country that has not relied heavily on borrowings from other, from either AMF or whatever Britain was to be able to finance our recurrent expenditure. Therefore, when at the level of the head of state, somebody at that level begins to argue that you cannot borrow in order to finance recurrent expenditure, this is seriously misleading the country. I want therefore to suggest, and allow me to continue with the journey after this, that Sunday in Kamukunji, we will be going back to the people's barasa here. They are a little afraid as to why we would want to go back to Kamukunji. We have to report progress. I repeat that those who have read a book by the title A Man For All Seasons, you remember, I think Suba you may have read it. Um, the main character, one of the characters, Attorney General of the United Kingdom, that is Sir Thomas More. And he said that in the thickets of the law, he was a forester. I have this sense because I've been in negotiations in the region and of course in our own country, that Kenya Kwanzaa, let me be respectful to them today, are not serious about this dialogue. They clearly are not. And I think out of this, out of this consult, consultative forum, the resolutions that will come out need to call them out. Yeah, you can always know when somebody is serious. How do you prefix dialogue with, 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 with a denial in the first place? Denial that this is it, we are not on it, we are not on it and we can only discuss I E B C reconstitution. That's what makes me think they are not serious about dialogue. I agree with Gauchau. Gauchau said, the ghetto president, he said, these people, if you don't, if you don't, if you don't, there's no dialogue they want. And, and, and I want to give him a negotiating principle. Duguka Gaocho, are you in the house? Uh, the ghetto president is right there. You find this applicable to Kenya Kwanzaa. If you cannot dazzle them, you know dazzling, you can't dazzle them with brilliance, then buffle them with bullshit. These guys may think they are bullshitting us, but I think we'll give them the bullshit. I'm sorry to use that four-letter word. It comes to a time, a time must come when you must call us paid, as paid. Either they are serious about this or they are not. But even if they are not, they need to recognize Kenyans have equal rights. And that you cannot sit on my rights and pretend you are doing me a favor. Therefore, the right to demonstrate, I think Mamamambi did it very well on Article One. We've been quoting Article thirty-seven clearly. I saw Kidure Kindiki making attempt in parliament, which is actually even constitutional because either you go back to the provisions of BBI, which made it possible for ministers. We were suggesting the ministers from, can come from outside and from parliament, some of them members of parliament, in order to deal with question time on the floor of the house. Now they are trying to do it through the window. I think Churchill, they must have learned their tricks on how to become a student. He go to a driving school. That's what they have done. Go to a driving school in order to get them to, on the floor of the house. But be that as it may, Kidure Kindiki says, "The police did not have express orders to fire live bullets at demonstrations." Something tells me he is not an insider. Something is telling me Kidure Kindiki doesn't know. We want him then to tell the country, why is it that an attempt, a deliberate attempt was made on the life of honourable was made on the life of honorable Raila Amolo Odinga when we did the demonstrations in Mbakasi South? Deliberate." Where was a young man I mentored called Kidure Kindiki? So when he comes to parliament and makes it look so good, he's sanitizing a regime that has already shown they are willing to spill blood even of the leadership in this country. If it wasn't that Raila Odinga's vehicle was armored, we would be talking a different story. Therefore, from this forum, please join me in demanding a thorough investigation on that attempt on the life of Raila Odinga. Otherwise, it would be casual. We are talking about men and women who don't care about shedding blood. And if they had knocked out Raila Odinga, and the assumption is people demonstrate for one week, for two weeks, and they will forget. I think now they know, when it comes to demonstrations, Kenyans have a sense of resilience. I agree with others who have said that we should, we should, as we negotiate, if we find there is no good faith, and we said that. I think in the statement that our brother Operanya issued on our behalf, we have made it clear, if we see evidence of no good faith, as indeed is clearly demonstrable from their own actions and utterances at every level, then the Kenyans have a right to go back to the streets. But imagine taking out Raila Odinga. Would surely, would we be thinking about this country? And have we stopped to calculate at whatever level? You assassins, we address you and you are financiers. Have you tried to calculate even whether it would be safe for you to go Kenya, your homeland? Therefore, we must stand strong. We must stand strong. We cannot be called. We love this country beyond what these people can imagine. We have no other place to go home. Kwa ivanawaskuru ni Sana. Remember Gauchau, if you can't dazzle them with brilliance, then buffle them. Buffle them with bullshit. May God bless you and bless our country.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency, for those sobering thoughts. I would like us to negotiate. You know, we are saying we are, we are saying that we are people who reason together. Many things have been said by our brothers and sisters who have come on this stage. This is a time when we are supposed to open plenary. Baba and the leadership team that is here have very patiently sat for the last three hours, listening to us. So I would like to negotiate with you and say, we go a maximum of half an hour and we divide that half an hour between us and the leadership. So that we give ten minutes to someone who has a very burning issue. Please don't raise any matter that has already been raised. You have a very burning issue. Please address it and then give Baba and the leadership team twenty minutes. So a maximum of thirty minutes. Is that acceptable? Is that acceptable? So just come, 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 I'd already recognized you. Please don't use the mic yet, just come. Switch it off, please. So you are number one and we would like to be very brief. The second person would be someone who represents youth and persons with disability. She's called Wanjamaina Hannah. If you put up your hand, somebody will bring a mic to you. Please bring a mic. Please give them that mic, I'll give you mine. Yeah? So Hannah, you'll be number two. Msenyandika, can I see your hand? Yeah, so Msenyandika is here, an elder. We haven't had the elders speak. So I'll take three more from the audience by a show of hands. Two here and one up there. So two here, yes, the lady, one. I'm looking. Yes, elder. Up there, one person? Yes, sister, come down. Okay? Could you, all of you come here? So you give a mic to each other and we take precisely ten minutes. But they want Ms. there to see them. You want Ms. there to see you. Yeah, so we could either speak down there or up here. So number one, brother, precise, very brief.
Your Excellency. Your Excellency, Honorable Baba Raila Amolo Odinga, Mama Marza Wangarikarua, Waishimiwa, Ndugu Zangu, Mabibi Namabwana, Hamjambu. Jambo la Kwanzaa, ningependa tu kushukuwa fur sahii kueleza nyinyi wa Kenya, zituvi wili pekeake. Ya Kwanzaa, ningheomba mukumuke moka wa nineteen ninety. There was a country called Romania. It had a president called Sezescu and Mrs. Sezescu. They were put on firing squad. You know why? Because of what is happening in Kenya today. So let us not take this country as a joke. We have children, we have grandchildren. We don't want to leave them on fire. Ladies and gentlemen, I am asking you Baba, look at us. We are helpless. We do not want jokes anymore in Kenya. Gentlemen, I will remind you about Rwanda, our country, our neighboring country here. Our plan was shut down. It had Abariyamana and Ulenkiamana. They were from here Nairobi, doing negotiation for peace. My friend, one million people died. Is that what you want to see in this republic? Wanawasimiwa mujambu. Nta samba mabo machacha mbaya ya semuapa. Nataka ni wakumbuza wa Kenya. Iindio serekali mbawa yekukusana pesa. Kusinda serekali yote tu mbawa yekuwa nahe since independence. Kodi ire natoera niyari ajusa idi. Pesa isomalisinaenda atujui. Ya piri. Ni vira wamepe ana kasi. Mimi nasandaa. Apambere Baba, unapendasana sisi kama wa kizi. Akuna mukisi ya apa tamoga. Nakuna wengi ndawa yekuwa kwa kodiyako za yote. Atu wala kwa musa asubui. Banu mbayaku. I'm very bitter about that. We must go to the drawing board. Wengi ndawa wengi ndawa mweni viongozi wa onambere, mimi vira niko hivi. Nimehutu amikunatumi gina wakisi wa rama nda kugwanga kwa mlango ya kubutu kwa funguwa wa peres. Nimesema sita enda. Na Baba wata nikuanbiye. Sijui kama kunaselekali. Sijui siyalewi. Mimi siyalewi. Makosa yare ruta amefanya naserekali yake. Within this very short time. Sijui kama enesa kura kepisi ya mula gani. Distribution of jobs ameumpa watu yao. Ntsia ire nambuna ya kuponya peres. Ata, wangariya kapisa na yonu wakumbuza. Kiku yana pewa minister PS ni muti yake. Na wendi wato na naselekali. If it means in safety my dead it be. Anapea pande yaka ndani ni muti yake. Pesa na ngia na kujomorewa, atu tafumili ya nafadari. Nasukuru, sasa nataka nikupu kiongozi, Baba kutoka kizi. Kana iki jano detu, niri nwa naapa. Takamal, atakamal, kwa sababu tunda wabunge. Kana muschana yura mbayo uli nominated, anai, mbayo nominated MP. Airen mayaka. Wabunga mbayo, wamechaguriwa na tikadiyaku. Wata kuwa na uruma sana, you are my friend. If there is a friend of yours, a true friend. Ni mimi. Wata nikuanbiye uruma wata. Amo foto wuranata. Utulinyema mungabai tuwejago katupatia tara kasi. Koa election ndea, mimi nipoto walanata. Sitakuwongia amengi. Nafikiriya nimekumbuza na yare machacha mbaya, nimekuwa na nigeongia amengi. Lakini, ngina intakuwuyi sibapu kidogo tu, asante.
Asante Msenyandika, nipaya ne mulekeo kidogo tu. Kwanzaa walio semu, asante Msenyandika. Utamsalimia unapotera mukachini, tafadari. Uneza kopitiha apa, umsalimie, asante Msenyandika. Tu mbigiri Msenyandika makofi. Sisi yambao tuko pandeho tuko nanafasi pale ju. Yeyote na junga nasi aileke ju. Navigya nambao tunatembea tembea, ini awamu muhimu sana. Namusho apa, kindly if you can, one issue, alafu naketi. I think the lady perhaps kindly. Asante, endelea.
Thank you very much, all protocols observed. Nataka kusalimia Baba tena. Wakati mbayo nilisalimia muhso tulikuwa na kuru. The last time, niliongeya na Baba tulikuwa University of Nairobi, analumnai, na Baba alikuwa atupe elfusita. Na yu elfusita ilikuwa ikujia the first week of the month. Kwa ivi okama awange kufania vipindi, sahi ningekuwa na elfu ini imebaki. Kwa sababu alikuwa mesema sita. Alafu yu ngine tna peleka weekend. Baba, I'm the national chairperson of People with Disabilities in Jubilee. Kunai issue ya cost of living. Na kwa sababu, in your wisdom, I wish you tied to the issue of social protection. Kwa sababu yu issue ya cost of living, it really affects people who are at the bottom of the pyramid. Now your social protection, it delays haikuji, inapeleka fani fani. And if it can be added, we can solve this issue for once and for all because we are as strong as our weakest link. Issue ya piri, nimavoni ongeba jada kintu ongeambili ni yu issue ya IABC. Yu issue ya IABC ikona mama mengi ndaniyake, including vituko, na vipindi mbayo IABC wa mekuwa wa kufania People with Disabilities, yambao wanaka kukua nominated in county assemblies and in national assemblies. Issue tu ndani yu IABC, ni vota apadi ya matijana. And that is why, sisi tumokuati request Baba, please make it to be all inclusive because our issues are very many, na tuwezi miss chance ya kuongelele ya hiyo maneno. Number tattoo and lastly, tumepena kuambia Baba is that people have been really requesting to join the mandamano. I was there. Ni vile tu, niliyona tiaga sikuwa mingi, but we really want to go to the mandamano. So make the mandamano safe and then we shall come back. Thank you very much, I appreciate.
Thank you, may God bless you, Karibu Ms. there. Okay. Asante Sana. Your Excellency, Right Honorable Raila Amolo Odinga, Madakarua, Paravamalwa. Wamajina mina da Joseph Ngano, I'm in Azimio Chairman, Bomet County. I've come here to also show solidarity with the people of Kenya with this fight for social justice. And I'm just here because my issue is only one, maybe I'm going to spare one issue. But the problems that the people of this country are going through are the same. People in Bomet, people in Madera, Mombasa, Busia are experiencing the same problems. Kama isida ya Mishaara, for example. I'm a retired civil servant, mimi sijalipua. Ngawa mina tokawo pande ukumpa. One of my friends of Kiriya, wanapatla special treatment. So I'm saying that we have people in all parts of this country who are with you, Baba, and people who care in solidarity for this fight. We are also saying that with respect to the servant, we know that if you say you want, the best thing would be open it so that everyone can see. Otherwise, I just want to give you some alarm. Wukutoka Bomet, asante Sana, Mongol Bariki.
Asante Ms. there, Karibu.
Thank you so much. My name is Huntington Noguk, the Kusonyanza Coordinator and the President of Meritas, Meru University. Comrades power, comrades leader. I'm here specifically for one thing, the issue on comrades. We know very well Baba is the fourth arm of government. And so being a government, it means you have everything. So I'm going to request Baba because it is a government. Baba is a government. Baba, students in this country, who are the next leaders in this country, are really going through hard times. This specific one is, students are being traumatized. We have institutions whereby students are being subjected into punishment, suspensions and expulsion. Baba, because you are a government, I'm requesting, let us have part of the judiciary that only listen to the cases raised by the comrades. Comrades power, just the same way we have the juvenile courts. Because right now, to a point that the other day you had student who are having the candle lighting, condolences with our fellows who were involved in accident. You find that our students are being subjected to a suspension or to an expulsion just for doing such a thing. So many students have been sent home. Baba, let's have, may we have, I'm requesting, may we have part of the judiciary that only listen to the cases of the students. As you witness, what happened in Meru University sometimes back, when the vice chancellor was being taken away, we stood firm and we assured that he was reinstated. And we want to thank God for that. But some of us were almost being taken home for fighting for what is right. Now, how will we help Kenya if almost those students who have the right, who have the voice are being taken home? So that was my request, thank you so much.
Thank you, comrade Ms. there.
Hamjabu. Wamajina mina ito wa wambogo. Nanataka Kwanzaa, kushukuru Baba. Kwayare amefanya i nchi. Nakubuka wakati moga nineteen eighty nine. Nilikuwa nafanya kasi pahari kunaitwa com clout. Baba, nikiyada kazini, alikuwa natoka hapo kwa Minister of Foreign Affairs, asubui mapema, tukaweviana hivi haja kama haji kuwa na njua. Alafu, Dioni, alikuwa nayenda ofisi, pare ajip. Dioni wakati nirieta nyubani, kuvukuwa KABC. Nikasikia, mtoto wa Jaramogi Odinga amewekua kizuisini, na imesainiwa na mutu alikuwa na yeto cabinet justice oletipisi. Sasa tagu wakati uo, mimi nimesimama na bamba, na nimekuwa nikimufuatilia. Nimekuwa nikipiga pigwa, na watu nikiwabia ata twenty thirteen. Mimi natoka udaya. Nanataka kuambia wana youth, haza. Nyinyi kemadi wakati yarieta mustuni, alikuwa in his twenties, twenty years. Na nyinyi sasa Baba nataka kumukabisi, i nchi. Natukimufuata kwa sababu akonamaona ya nchi. Nakwabia tutataboa. Youth muji kakamuwe, tufuatemaba, nanajua akonamaona masuri kwa nchi yetu. Nanaku, niko na furaha. Kwa kuona wa idia, na ndugu yangu keni. Hawa, wametoka from the account for the son. Na sisi tumesema pia, tutawafuata. Kwa sababu tumeyona yare mabo inahendeleya katika i nchi. Ni ya kutenanisha. Umaskini ile hiko hapa nchini. Na unaona watu hawa jari. Yani, yuzi niriabia mutu, i mabo ya sijui kareji nikikuju chauvanism in politics itaisha. Na itaisha kama tunafuata bamba, wa kiwa na maba. Kwa sababu, i nchi navesa haribika. Tukotiare katika haribaya kabisa. Lakini tuki toka wa idia na kubu, sasa na furahi. Kwa sababu, nilikuwa na shido ukowapi. Lakini sasa umejitokeza, na kwa hivi yo, sisi tuko kwa ra inio. Nanakuwa sii nyinyi, tafadari, tufuate Baba, nanajua akonamaona masuri. Na na kwasii nyini, tafadali, tufuatem Baba, na njua akonamaona masuri kwa i nchi.
Asante sana Ms.
People's power! People's power! Our people united shall never be defeated. Turundie yo, our people, our people united shall never be defeated. My name is Florence Canya, associate justice activist. Baba, nananjua kama nyamelu, mana mimi nimesi mama na Baba, mea kayote, na sita arundi nyuma. Baba, kila nataka kukuambia mchana waleo. Usilekese kamba. Sababu, nimeangalia kwa mbali na ona wale watu, ile vitu wanafanya nikipindire. Ile kitu wanafanya ni mimi, nikipindire, na mimi nambia Baba, asilekese kamba. Wa kiena kwa masungu muso, wasileta yale, waa wanataka, na walete mabo yale tunataka kwa nchi yetu ya Kenya. Na kama vile, comrades, zangu amesema apa, kina gaucho, kinaru tumambi, ni nasema akuna. Haki itapatikan na kama tumeka, tumejikuunja hiwi. La sima njoto hiwa inahendelea hapa indje. Viva comrades, viva!
Asante.
Viva comrades, viva! Baba, kabla ni ondoki hapa nataka kusema hiwi. Nasukuru Mungu sana kwa kutupatia wewe kwa nchi yetu ya Kenya. Nasukuru Mungu sana kwa kulinda wewe mea kayote. Na nasukuru sana sababu wewe ulichukuwa ju kumu la kuteteamo anainchi wa kawayinda kila wakati. Na nasema hiwi. Baba, ukiwa mbele yetu, uki sama right hand, sisi ni right hand. Uki sama about hand, ni about hand. Uki sama forward march, we're forward march. Na tunasema Mungu akulinde, na i mabo ya kutua, kitu ya uwongosi wa raisi, kabila mmoja mwa kau, iyo ngine inarundi hapa. Iyo kitu la sima tu ikatae, ata kama ni kupitiya kwa katiba, hiwa saasa kitu inakuwa rotational. And I know, Raila Amolondinga is an institution. Raila Amolondinga is a movement. Raila Amolondinga is people's driven leader, not an individual leader. Thank you so much, long live Baba.
My dear, asante, ndugu Karibu, na ni yombe tufupishi, asante.
Okay, ni ngi taka kuongea about jumbo, ni mekuwa ni kifuatilia. I'm a hoka in the city of Nairobi. Na sisi hoka tumepitiya ma bo mingi sana, in the hands of the government. There's one thing I would say, in Kenya's political language or parlance, a poor, a common citizen is a person who is as far removed as possible from the reach of state regimes and its benefits, but is constantly a victim of its violent power. That is what we have been facing in this country for the last, I would say, sixty years, though I'm here to be sixty years. So, tumejabu kufuta justice, na niliyadika petition hapa, tukandika barua, na nilataka kusema mchana, kucha hapa, I mean in broad daylight. Is it barua ni patia various leaders in this country? Various prominent leaders in this country. And I would not be afraid to say who and who. I'll mention them by names. I gave these letters to Raila Odinga first, I gave them to Madha Karua, I gave them to Mwangi Waidia, the former governor of my county, of my county, Monaka County. But none of them tried to respond to us about how we could get justice for our people. It's very sad, it's very bad. I hate the way we do things in this country. Kama tuwezi make the institutions of this country to make for everyone, then we are only playing games. Because we will not be here forever, nobody will be here forever. We should do it not for us but for posterity. So I want to question why, to know from our leaders, if I can get whatever feedback. Because one thing I thought that by approaching Madha Karua, as a former justice and constitutional minister, I thought she would be in a position to help us to get justice for our people. Our peoples were raped, others were killed by the city council and the Kenya police, and many areas were confiscated. And today, many of our people are living with those scars. But we have tried to seek justice, but nobody is coming to our aid, nobody is coming to our help. I think in that we say with Martin Luther King Jr., that in the end, we remember not the noise of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. So we didn't get taka ni kupata jibu from our leaders if it. If, ile maneno nimesema kama ni ya kweiri, because we should follow up and get our leaders to get working for us. They should be working for us, not the other way around.
Asante sana, na fikiri yu inaleweka, na wakati unaketi, nitakutuma kwa protocol officer or court ili uchukue hi, na verify your petition. Asante sana.
Comrades power! Comrades power! Komajina Vincent, mimi mukaji hoko embakasi. What I want to talk about is this one thing, about unemployment to our youth. Most of the youth currently, they are unemployed. And kwa ile manifesto hile Asimio, Baba liongea about six K. And I still believe that, iyo ndotetu, Baba one day, vilana skuma, ato sisi we ni kava fijana tukonyumake, tona taka akue president, ili zile manifesto ni alisema, ile six K fijana wa pate. Currently, most of the youth, they are unemployed, they don't have job. Say you can damcha, unapata most of the youths, wa ko tubez, sile java besona kulatuni, mirando whatever, which is not good. Another thing, ili i mabo ya Baba, ana fato mbo ya mandamano, tona taka i mandamano yendele, jus fijana tunau mia. I mandamano, wakati walegi ngosiwetu asaba wanatu, wanatu kisapale mbele, sisi pia, tona taka vilituka ucha lisema. Every Monday, mandamano ikue kila siku. Ili wakati, wakati wanamaliza na na ile mbo ya bipartisan, sisi pia. Sababu, wakati na ngia, wakituwa na kama tuko barabarani, nduwa tatinisa vitu zetu.
Asante sana.
Another thing, dakamoya.
Tafadali.
Nataka, taka gaucho, please, pale Jivangi, sahi maskari wa meweka kila siku wa napukua watu pale. Gaucho, tona taka wale wonge pale, wonge na ma polizo, ili mbo ya kudawo pale waachi, asante sana.
Asante ndugu, asante ndugu.
All protocols observed, viva comrades, viva! Forward organizing forward. I'm Jerim Wangi from the Social Justice Movement, the RIT chapter. And my contribution hapa, ni amoso teen moms and women in general, na pia the working class ambao wa komadare, mimi monye ni me tokama dare. Na sisi tuki tokia twentieth, siku ya mandamano, tuli tokia because of the high cost of living. Ambayo tuna experience sana, ambayo inatu umiza sisi kama wa nainchi aboa kuukochini at the grassroots level. But here I just change, na tunasema mediation ikiendelea uko na bipartisan room, in the bipartisan room. Sisi tna fapia, sisi tna endelea, kwa sababu, Hon Kalonzo here amesema, those people do not have direction. And sisi kama watu, hatwezi kubali kulidiwa with people who have a direction, we should give direction. Na direction ni, we put pressure so that the right team yeku ya pombele, so that kile sisi anye tunataka sisi kama wa nainchi wa uko chini, na sisi kama women ambao tunateseka kila siku has been known, Char has said before, tunataka vitu zambazo tunataka zikuwe presented ya pombele. Na pia, what Vincent has just said here, majority of the youths are not employed, na nduinaleta also crisis, zinyezina endelea kuna high cost of living, kuna crime ambayo inendelea kwa mitetu, na ni kwa sababu fijaro amenda shule, wazadi wa mmasomesho, lakini hakuna employment. Na ni kwa sababu ya government ambayo ikoka, imeji, weka imeji position hapa kama government ya ruto, ambayo, haina interest ya the youth that had. So nilazima tumash, siku ya saba saba, tunde twatoe State House, na tukake the right people who ambao wa kona interest ya the people that had, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Na ni washukuru nyote, muliotoa mauni haya, hapa, na nitoa ya kikishokuamba, ya tashugulikiwa kikamilifu. Ni yombe saasa kumkaribisha, kiongozi waliwa cha cha katika bungu la kijafa, mujumbe wa ugunja, mushimiwa James Opio Wanda. Karibu mushimo Wanda.
Hello, hello. Hello, hello, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Bagi, and all protocol observed. I want to start by saying that as the Asimio Laumoya Coalition Parliamentary Group, we fully associate ourselves with the sentiments that have been expressed since this morning. And more particularly, more particularly, we fully adopt the position taken by the social justice sector on these issues. Fully, fully, fully. Let me just ask those MPs who are here, to just stand that we may know them, just stand there with. Very good, very good, very good. Asante sana. We also have in our midst the leader of majority of the Nairobi County Assembly, a mushimo Peter Imatok, and I think they are with mushimo Moses Ogeto, and all the MCS who are here, kindly be outstanding for you to be acknowledged. Thank you very much. And let me say this, let me say this, about the so-called bipartisan process. You are aware, and all of us are aware indeed, that in the election of August twenty twenty-two, upwards of eight million Kenyans who are registered voters did not vote. So the question is, how can parliament pretend to be representing those people and yet would not know to which political formation they belong? And that's why we are saying that unless that bipartisan process is opened up to include external players, including the church, the student unions, the workers, the youth, the women, and everybody else, they cannot be allowed to proceed. And that is going to be the point of the party. That that process can only be an extra parliamentary process. In any case, we know that parliament has never offered solutions to this country whenever we have wanted solutions. As a matter of fact, parliament has on many occasions been an impediment to the country's progress. And therefore, the Parliament of Kenya cannot pretend to be an alpha or omega. We must open up those discussions to include everybody else. Who don't subscribe to either Asimio or Kenya Kwanzaa, snamu na yu. Lapili, the current economic situation that we are facing, which has resulted in the government for the first time in our history failing to pay his workers, is directly linked or related to that election of August last year. And its outcome, which we have rejected. Because anywhere else in the world, when a regime comes into power, it must first inspire confidence. If it's a legitimate administration, it must be able to reassure the investors, the business, the market, without even saying or doing anything. What we have seen with the Kenya Kwanzaa regime is the exact opposite. It has scared away everybody else, the investors, the market, and we have got a lot of uncertainty, which can only be addressed by opening up the savva. And on the matter of the savva, Your Excellency Baba, we are aware that Venezuelans have been here for the past three or so weeks. They were sent to come and tamper with the savva, so that eventually if the pressure is too much on them, they can open it up and then we find faulty record. Those Venezuelans, we have been on their track, we have been trailing them. They have been able to escape our drug nets. Last two weeks or so, they were staying in a hotel in Klaesu. When they realized we are on their tracks, they moved. They are on the run, but they are still in the country. We are also aware that they have had a meeting with a former CEO of IBC. They have equally had a meeting with a former chairman of IBC. So we want to caution them, wherever they are and their sponsors, that they are in our radar. And we cannot allow this country to move on unless and until we open up the savva and get the true position. Wanga pwa koya na mimi. Finally, finally, we want to agree with those who have spoken here before us, that we can scale the stairs as we choose. We can negotiate in an extra parliamentary process as we continue with the people's actions out here. And we, members of the Asimio Parliamentary Group, are going to be in the forefront alongside fellow actors. We also have with us a message of solidarity that has been sent by Kenyans in the Aspara, led by Madame Comfort Munoru Mwanki, who is currently in the UU, who supports this movement with the MDD, Bungu La Wanaichi, and many other actors. And they have sent a speech, which should have been ready here, but because of time we shall share it out after this. And therefore, with those remarks, allow me to just ask two MPs. One representative National Assembly, who is Honorable Aladwa, to come and just say a jumbo, and the leader of minority coalition in the Senate, the Honorable Senator Stuart Masaiu, just one minute each, before I give the microphone back to the Honorable Waziri Eugene Wamalwa to proceed with their program. Thank you.
Asanti mushimoa Wanda. Hamjumbo wote, mimi natakuza mama matatu, kwa sababu, vyongozi wa kohapa, na wala meitwa woto amezunguza, kulingana na mahali umetoka, na mahali unakilisha. Eto mushimo Aladwa, nikitoka County Nairobi, mabo wu ni matatu. Bipartisan leader, kwanza, i mabo akunegotiate, na watu ambao ajelavi, na nimeskia watu ma ngia hapa, na watu ambao ajelavi wa o nibele, kwa zata tuko disappointed kwa mabo ya Monday, wakatu la risha mandamano. Ilo zuma tuseme. Next time, we kota kwa ni kyo mandamano, we ongeya na how, tuwate tupa mandu go street. How watu ajelavi luka ngine, ata mki sama mchabu komitio tijirini, ata mmezo mmoja, hawata sekia. So, luka kuskia, na nasikia ngi wa lakutukana, kama gashagua. Mutu ambata kuti, imangalia left, longi imangalia right. Yata kuvaa juwi, na namka na mdo make kupua, anatukana kiongozi wetu. Ambayo yenda kwa balot. Sisi wa jumbe tumesema, na mi nataka la jumba kapa mushimo president, wetu, watu wa amuke. Si wa kiskia president kwa mahali plani, na Madha Karua na youthi wa na kimpia hapa. Sa mandamano hawako. The next mandamano bipartisan leader, tona taka ekua coordinated, kula fijana hapa, wa na groups apa Nairobi. Inakwa disappointed, mandamano kisha, hawadua nayenda wapi, na wana tokawapi. Na wamesi mama na wewe. Tunataka tuena proper organization, fijana watu akimaliza katoa be pua rasi, uya ma mia, uya mefanyia hiwi, ndo tula tua, tula kolekwa tuetu wa lo momi. Inakwa vipaa sana, tumimaliza mandamano, wa tuetu wa juwi ba kolekia. Baba watu lakupenda, mabo kwa risha mabo wa chana layo, kota tupa mandi, wa tuwa tampa ni, wanga pwa na nuga mukono. Ilo ndofilinga watu, na dyomudiwa watu, we kota kwa risha ulisa mata. Iyo ndofili ya watu, na dyomudi ya watu, we ekota kwarisha ulisa mata. Ulisa Eugene, mukikupalela kwa rumuko niyenu, mukitoka wako nyiminyamaza. Wa sini weto nde kwa street. Ya mwisho, apa kuna m tumoga? Apa akuna m tumoga? Sa i tanasikia, wamefukuza mama ambaye ni, wa jamie tuwa tokaka Western, DJ wetu wa NYES, Madame Sakwa. Mama asha juma mefukuza kazi, sa i asubui. Kwa sababu, alikata kufanya mabo ya, bili yakiya kufanya tendering. Wamefukuza uya muluya mama, na waliwa wako kupua, wako kwenya quaza, wame nyamaza. Na o ni mabo etu muluya mefukuza, kutoka Vega County. Tuna sema, watu fukuza, tu fukuze, tunakota baba ku president, atutenuwetena. Na sisi nijua, kwa monyazi mungu, baba atafika malia taka kua. Na mutumoga apa, mutumoga apa, ayende kuao. Baba kuna wajumbe nikimaliza, wajumba wane shima na dabu, ata ODM. Sa zino komaalwa lakutu kujpende keza, sa madamano wajificha, madamano kisha wala kufuata. Kama ni madamano, iye madamano. Tukiongoza na nani, na wandai, tunona kila mutu, wandai waka register, nadaske nomination, wape wala mepanda kazi. Kuna wajumba uko, wini emesikia, kama langata, amenada, DM amenada, si wapi amenada. Baba risha makucha ko, fukuza watu kwa chama, tuwa watu kwa chama, twende by election, mimi nikwakari kwa likatua barua. Adaka masta chokubo kwa ODM, mungu abariti.
Aya, aya, asante sana, asante sana.
Wa Kenya wewe, wa Kenya wewe, baba, na mama masa, vyongozwi wetu, itfaki zote zikiangaliwa. Ndugu zangu, mimi nataga kusima kitu kimoya tu. Ya kuamba emefika wa kati sasa, nilazima hii serikali ya Kenya Quanza ya guke. Hawana injia yote ya kufanya kisheria, kuweza kuchukuwa yule mbungu mboja. Ambayo sisi tukona epande hii, akiwa ni mbungu wa jubili. Na jubili kama mnavejuwa hiko nani ya zimio. Hivi sasa wanaanza kuchukuwa watu wetu, waksima kuamba wanareka kuao, ili weweza kufanya ile jopo la wale, la wale wabunge, apa utmechaguwa, saba epande huu, saba epande huu. Muleza kuwana kiana ama mutu wanaitu wa Eden Keinan. Mushimoa Eden Keinan, iye nimfuasi wa jubili. Wa yoe uko chini ya kiioni. Na nimakosa sana, na ukosefuwa sheria. Ikiwa mnazeza kuchukuwa mbungu, ambayo uko epande huu, alafu mka mchukuwa mka sema, uko epande wenu. Wa yoe baba sisi tuna sema, equity, abo oni sheria. Inasema if you want equity to come to you, if you want equity to help you, you must come with clean hands. Matiyari katika hili jopo madu mepanya. Baba la wale watu ambao ni wa wiximiwa, ndadiya mbungu. Saba epande, saba epande huu ya zimio, na saba epande Kenya Quanza, mimi na ona niya hio. Haiko, wao hawako tayari, kwa absurru huu wa kuapa tuleza kuongea, kwa luka ambao tutelewana. Luka ambayo Kenya Quanza nizeza kuelewa, ni mamo amano peke ake, hakuna luka ingine. Wa yoe sisi hakuna kurudi nyuma, hakuna kuo gopa, baba ksema twende right, tutenda right, aksuma twende left, twenda left. Mimi nasema injia boja tulboja. We kama naume, we kama manamke, we kama kiumbesa mozi mungu, ulizaliwa skuboya. Na mozi huu, ni mozi mtukufu, mozi wa ravadani. Ujue skuboya takufa, lakini hichi ya Kenya itaendelea. Wa yoe tuna sema ya kuamba hichi ya Kenya, ni mohimu kuliko mtiyote, ni kuba kuliko hata ruto monyeewe. Wa yoe sisi ya tuto gopa mtiyote, baba tuko tayari, uki sema twengeya wajani, twengeya wajani, tutapamana nao vilivyo, bila kuo gopa. Asante sana.
Aya, asante sana, mushimoa Mazaiu, kwa vili Aladwa amongea, ikali sana, wata nitaje ah mbungu tu, komajina. Kuna mbungu wa langat, mbungu wa kibra, mushimoa amalimu, tuta orero. Vili na snaye mbungu wa karachiwanya, mushimoa adipo ukuwame. Tunae mbungu wa ndewa, mushimoa matino wino. Mbungu wa wingi central, mushimoa architect, gidi mulingi, mulingi. Na tulikuwa na wale, wale wa mbungu, we nekamiti negotiations, kiongoza na otina moli, wale kwa pa wote, na kito amenada injekidogo. La mwisho, Senator Wamigori, Senator Wamigori, mushimoa Eddie Okech, asante sana. Wata intamboe, former DJ Wenyeri, tena kiongozi wa nawake, wa zimio, mushimoa Dr. Karoza Nkarugu. Asante sana, Waziri Eugene Wamalwa. Sasa intaku, kabidi i microphone, wende lena ratiba, asante sana. May God bless you.
Asante sana, wanazimio ham Jumbo, civil society ham Jumbo, comrades' power. Asante sana comrades kutkaribisha apa, mimi nilikuwa comrades apa, mea kaminge kidogo ili opita. Na nilikuwa na bia baba, wakati nilikuwa ma napunzi apa, nilikuwa na ka Mamlaka Hall, wale tulikuwa wanasheria, ingenia tulikuwa pale, na kila mara tuliskia jaramogi ya nakuja apa, masinde mliro, mati shikuku, na wingi waliwa kuwa napigania uhuru wapili, kukiwemo young tax, wakati huo kinaraila, kinorengo, tulikuwa tunakuja apa, kuasikiza, lakini pia waliwa natuskiza. Na leo nasukuru sana, Odoro Ngwen Zeyn, kuakikisha wenyeboma hili comrades, wamepewa na fasi, wawe nasi sikuya leo. Sababu hawa ndio tuna pigania Kenya idaye, Kenya ili okosas. Tumeasikiza sikuya leo, kazi yetu leo ilikuwa nikuasikiza nini. Nazaidi najua, apa munataka muskize baba na mama. Mumechoka sana kukama saa mengi apa. Lakini kabla zaleta baba na mama, kunavyongozwi wa chache naomba mtupedaka chache tuwa wasalimu, alafu tulete mama, atulete baba, munatupa hio rohusa. So, wingi omekoa nasema ti mlima Kenya, hauko na baba, ti baba li shinda kupanda mlima, apa tuna vyongozwi kutoka mlima Kenya. Nimumskiza kwa makini sana.